Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Present.
Mayor Rickman.
Here.
Thank you.
We're getting some feedback up here. One of these devices.
All right, I think we got it fixed. Thank you. Reverend McDowell, could you say a word of prayer?
That's my hedges. For this day and for all that you've done for us. For the blessings of life, health, and strength. For the promise of your presence in our lives. For this city that continues to grow, bloom, and blossom. We pray for its stability. And we pray for courage to do what is necessary. To allow this city to continue to grow and expand itself. Bless those who are here today. Sensitize us who are sitting at this table. To the needs and the concerns of this community. We ask it. We claim it. In his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. D'Amelio, are you ready to adopt the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we ask for council to adopt the agenda as outlined in Amendment item 49, Ordinance 2025-077, the Lease of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HUD Blood Properties, by removing 1735 Roslin Drive from consideration and proceeding with 1651 Roslin Drive.
Move.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion here in the unseen them? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Present.
Mayor Rickman.
Here.
Thank you.
We're getting some feedback up here. One of these devices.
All right, I think we got it fixed. Thank you. Reverend McDowell, could you say a word of prayer?
That's my hedges. For this day and for all that you've done for us. For the blessings of life, health, and strength. For the promise of your presence in our lives. For this city that continues to grow, bloom, and blossom. We pray for its stability. And we pray for courage to do what is necessary. To allow this city to continue to grow and expand itself. Bless those who are here today. Sensitize us who are sitting at this table. To the needs and the concerns of this community. We ask it. We claim it. In his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. D'Amelio, are you ready to adopt the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we ask for council to adopt the agenda as outlined in Amendment item 49, Ordinance 2025-077, the Lease of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HUD Blood Properties, by removing 1735 Roslin Drive from consideration and proceeding with 1651 Roslin Drive.
Move.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion here in the unseen them? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickman.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this point, I want to just bring some self-attention before we start on the regular agenda. Tonight, we are going to be working on the short-term rental ordinance changes from the second reading, and we've incorporated a lot of information that we received from everybody. So I'm going to read through this quickly and get to the point, because some of y'all may not want to hang around. We are not taking up the moratorium today, and let me tell everybody why. Because part of the changes that we're proposing needed some maps. And those maps showed where the appropriate places and opportunities for folks to go in the future. We have to make some changes in there because some of the input that we received from folks here in the last week and some examples from other cities made a lot of sense on how we want to move this forward. So what we'll be doing is, in a month from now, and in between that, we'll be sharing that information, those maps, and how that will work. We'll have a resolution. Then that goes to the Planning Commission for the November meeting at the Planning Commission. And so that'll be a public hearing, Planning Commission, and then they'll come back with a recommendation adopting that or recommending it to go forward. Then it'll come back to us for a first reading and a public hearing. So we're not lifting or changing, we're leaving it status quo at this point because making sure that we have time to get all this information that we have and these maps out to the public prior to the public Planning Commission meeting. Originally, that meeting was scheduled for October 10th. We did not feel like we had October 3rd, maybe I said the wrong date, but in the beginning of October, we did not feel we had enough time to get all of that back out to the public. And it's very important because this is what's going to, how we're going to designate going forward. Includes commercial, includes mixed use, it colludes certain corridors, and so we want to make sure that we have all that information out. Today, we will have the second reading on the ordinance changes for enforcement. And we took into account several of the comments, folks, there's some compromises in between. And so I just wanted to let everybody know what the process is going to be moving forward tonight. So that folks, and I can give you a quick synopsis, so if you don't want to hang around, you're welcome to, but, or, you know, we heard a lot of discussion between 18 and 25. We're settling on 21. Lot of folks shared a lot of data with us about the one night, it's going to stay the one night. There is language, we will not be adding the last sentence of prose, we'll edit by adding these in section 12. These parking spaces cannot be street parking spaces. We also put in there such booking may be, we have copies of all this, we'll go through it again tonight when we read it, I just wanted to give the folks here who may or may not want to hang out, an opportunity. In section 403, second and third sentences deleted, this reflects grace periods, the original implementation of the STR permitting process, removing them will prevent future misunderstandings about the idea of what a new, how a new STR can function for any period of time without a permit. And then section 5410, we're adding language for each violation in the ordinance punishable by a fine if the owner does not come into compliance after a 15-day notice period. Full section reads that the failure of an STR owner to obtain permit in accordance to and abide by the provisions in the section within 15 days of notice of noncompliance shall result in administrative penalty of 500 per offense. So that's what we're going to be doing today. And if you have any questions, you're welcome to stay after the meeting, I'll be here, be glad to go through that. But I do think it's very important as we move forward in this, that we have all the bits and pieces exactly documented and correct, so there's no confusion with anybody, if you're in the STR, or you're in a neighborhood, or you're in the business community, everybody has all the correct information. And we want to make sure that we have time to get that out, and we don't feel like we have enough time to get that out ahead of time. So we're going to be moving this out, so in November, this will go to the Planning Commission. With that, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August 19?
Moving.
Got a motion?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any changes or corrections? Hearing not seeing them. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Mayor Rickman.
Aye.
Yeah, we got public input now.
Okay, at this time, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council about items on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
All right, Mayor, we will start off with Mr. Gus Bueno.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon, once again. Members, Mayor. What I read yesterday is that the ordinance will no longer grant new license, right? Is that what's under the new?
No new license in residential until we make the changes and it goes through the Planning Commission. That's correct. In a residential area, correct. All existing are in place.
Okay, so this just being pushed down?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, based upon your very comment last meeting, when you said we are not shutting this business down, I'm sorry. I bought a new property two weeks ago because I was hoping that, and it's what happens now.
Well, I mean, I don't know why you would buy a property if we haven't voted on something to lift in a residential area, because nobody said that we're having this date here, but the input that came from both the STR, the neighborhoods, and the others has given us an opportunity to present a really comprehensive laid-out, what I think is probably the best way to approach this plan, but we're not going to push it out until that map and everything is out and has gone through the proper channels. Through the process, you'd still have to wait until it goes to the Planning Commission. So I don't know why you would go buy a piece of property with the intent of an STR when the process has always been that even with lifting and a new ordinance being in place has to go through a process. And that's a minimum of 60-day process.
60 days is understandable about the property because you said with every single word, I will not shut this business down.
We're not shutting it down.
Yes, effectively, you are.
No, we're not. You have an STR currently, correct?
I do.
And it's operating, correct?
I'm sorry?
It's operating, correct?
It is operating.
You're not being shut down.
Any business that's not growing is dying.
But you can go right now to mixed-use and commercial corridor and build a thing. You chose.
Bless those who are here today. Sensitize us who are sitting at this table to the needs and the concerns of this community. We ask it, we claim it, in his name, amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Darmay, are you ready to adopt the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we ask for council to adopt the agenda as outlined, amending item forty-nine, ordinance two thousand twenty-five zero seven-seven, the lease of hazard mitigation grant program HUD Blood Properties by removing one-seven-three-five Roslin Drive from consideration and proceeding with one-six-five-one Roslin Drive.
She'll move second.
We got a motion in a second. Any further discussion hearing, not seeing them. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this point, I want to just bring some self-attention before we start on the regular agenda. Tonight, we are going to be working on the short-term rental ordinance changes from the second reading, and we've incorporated a lot of information that we received from everybody. So I'm going to read through this quickly and get to the point, because some of y'all may not want to hang around. We are not taking up the moratorium today, and let me tell everybody why, because part of the changes that we're proposing needed some maps. And those maps showed where the appropriate places and opportunities for folks to go in the future. We have to make some changes in there, because some of the input that we received from folks here in the last week, and some examples from other cities, made a lot of sense on how we want to move this forward. So what we'll be doing is, in a month from now, and in between that, we'll be sharing that information, those maps, and how that will work, we'll have a resolution. Then that goes to the Planning Commission for the November meeting at the Planning Commission. And so that'll be a public hearing, Planning Commission, and then they'll come back with a recommendation adopting that, or recommending it to go forward. Then it'll come back to us for a first reading and a public hearing. So we're not lifting or changing, we're leaving it status quo at this point, because making sure that we have time to get all this information that we have and these maps out to the public prior to the public Planning Commission meeting. Originally, that meeting was scheduled for October tenth. We did not feel like we had October third, maybe I said the wrong day, but in the beginning of October, we did not feel we had enough time to get all of that back out to the public. And it's very important, because this is what's going to, how we're going to designate going forward, includes commercial, includes mixed use, it colludes certain corridors. And so we want to make sure that we have all that information out. Today, we will have the second reading on the ordinance changes for enforcement. And we took into account several of the comments, folks, there's some compromises in between. And so I just wanted to let everybody know what the process is going to be moving forward tonight, so that folks, and I can give you a quick synopsis, so if you don't want to hang around, you're welcome to, but, or, you know, we heard a lot of discussion between eighteen and twenty-five, we're settling on twenty-one. Lot of folks shared a lot of data with us about the one night, it's going to stay the one night. There is language, we will not be adding the last sentence of prose, we'll edit by adding these in section twelve, these parking spaces cannot be street parking spaces. We also put in there such booking may be, we have copies of all this, I'm going to, we'll go through it again tonight when we read it, I just wanted to give the folks here who may or may not want to hang out, an opportunity. In section four oh three, second and third sentences deleted, this reflects grace periods that the original implementation of the STR permitting process, removing them will prevent future misunderstandings about the idea of what a new, how a new STR can function for any period of time with a, out of permit. And then section five four-ten, we're adding language for each violation in the ordinance punishable by a fine if the owner doesn't not come into compliance after a fifteen-day notice period. Full section reads, the failure of an STR owner to obtain permit in accordance to and abide by the provisions in the section within fifteen days of notice of noncompliance shall result in administrative penalty of five hundred per offense. So that's what we're going to be doing today, so, and if you have any questions, you're welcome to stay after the meeting, I'll be here, be glad to go through that. But I do think it's very important, as we move forward in this, that we have all the bits and pieces exactly documented and correct, so there's no confusion with anybody, if you're in the STR, or you're in a neighborhood, or you're in a business community, everybody has all the correct information, and we want to make sure that we have time to get that out, and we don't feel like we have enough time to get that out ahead of time. So we're going to be moving this out, so in November, this will go to the Planning Commission. With that, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August nineteenth?
It's a move.
Got a motion?
Second.
A motion in a second, any changes or corrections? Hearing not seeing them, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got public input now.
Okay, at this time, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council about items on the agenda. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
All right, Mayor, we will start off with Mr. Gus Bueno.
Hello, everybody, good afternoon, once again, members, mayor. What I read yesterday is that the ordinance will no longer grant new license, right, is that what's, under the new?
No new license in residential until we make the changes and it goes through the Planning Commission, that's correct. In a residential area, correct. All existing are in place.
Okay, so this just being pushed down?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, based upon your very comment last meeting, when you said, we are not shutting this business down, I'm sorry, I bought a new property two weeks ago, because I was hoping that, and it's, what happens now?
Well, I mean, I don't know why you would buy a property if we haven't voted on something to lift in a residential area, because nobody said that we're having this date here, but the input that came from both the STR, the neighborhoods and the others, has given us an opportunity to present a really comprehensive laid-out, what I think is probably the best way to approach this plan, but we're not going to push it out until that map and everything is out and has gone through the proper channels. Through the process, you'd still have to wait till it goes to the Planning Commission, so I don't know why you would go buy a piece of property with the intent of an STR, when the process has always been that even with lifting and a new ordinance being in place has to go through a process, and that's a minimum of sixty-day process.
Sixty days is understandable, about the property, because you said with every single word, I will not shut this business down this.
We're not shutting it down.
Yes, effectively, you are, because.
No, we're not. You have a STR currently, correct?
I do.
And it's operating, correct?
I'm sorry?
It's operating, correct?
It is operating.
You're not being shut down.
Any business that's not growing is dying.
But you can go right now to mixed-use and commercial corridor and build a thing. You chose to buy that, you can't lay that on my doorstep.
Understood.
There's a lot of things you can blame me for, but that ain't it.
Thank you, Mr. Bueno.
I still have one minute and twenty seconds, don't I?
Oh, yeah, you go ahead, use your time.
Yeah, I think one important thing we discussed last meeting, and I really want to reinforce, when I moved here, I came from a country that is in collapse. And in fifty years from now, it is not going to matter, you know, if I got this property or that property. I think the legacy that we're all building today is the most important thing, and by treating this country as a democracy instead of a republic, which most people here unfortunately don't know the difference, we're really going to a path where we are violating people's individual rights, and that is a sacred thing, that I would hope the people that are before me would really know, how wrong is that? So when our founding fathers came to this country, they knew how harmful governments could be, and they wrote that in the constitution, because they really knew that it had to be there. Unfortunately, there's too many personal violations, and this is just another one. So I just wanted to put it out there.
I have to disagree on that one, and just know that zoning is in place, commercial zones, other zones, every other business has a place that they can go to, right? So I don't know that I agree with you, especially since we're not shutting down your business. You have opportunities, and you may be surprised, you may have some better opportunities, and you don't even realize it, because you haven't seen it yet.
I would love to discuss with you.
So I would reserve your comment, but to say that we're taking away your business, I just have to disagree with you, and, you know, but this is what I love about our country, because my parents moved here in nineteen sixty-seven, and the reason they became naturalized is because we could have conversations like this. We can agree to disagree, but we have a thousand things that you and I will probably work on to continue to improve this community, so.
I agree a hundred percent.
We'll disagree on this one, and we'll keep moving.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm an architect here in town, and I own a short-term rental on Forest Drive. And the one thing in the ordinance, Mayor Rickaman, that you didn't say was the property management license, that was.
Oh, yeah.
Is that still in?
I'm sorry, the definition of responsible local representative, we're not adding the requirement that the local representative have a property manager's license, we're only adding the last sentence, the responsible local representative may be the property owner or have his or her designee, so.
So we have to get training to become a property manager, and then it's another fee?
No.
Because I already pay five fees to the City of Columbia right now.
No, you don't have to do that, that's not what I just said. I said, we are not adding that requirement for local representation, only those folks that aren't local.
And so we don't have to go through the Board of Realtors to get it?
Um, excuse me?
We don't have to go through the Board of Realtors, as it was formerly?
No, sir.
Okay.
If you're a local owner, if you're not a local owner, yes.
Okay, cool, I'm for that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Wendy Bergman, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council and the community today. Many of you know, because we've been here before, talked to a lot of you, but my husband and I have a business called Hartwood Furnish Homes, and we fell into this niche in twenty sixteen, kind of organically, and found something that we're really good and passionate about. And that's grown, and we are based in the Elmwood Park community, and we have a lot of owners that we represent here today, and a lot of our employees that are also seated over on the side here with us, that this will impact too. One of my main roles starting the company was to talk to guests, I would give them recommendations, tell them what to do, where to stay, what neighborhoods might be a good fit for them. So I want to just talk a little bit about some of the people that stay, because I think that that's gotten a little diluted in this conversation. Of course, we have the typical tourists, people that are here for special events, maybe a concert or a state fair, holiday market vendors, the football games, actors in a play, the list goes on and on. But we also have military, people that are here for a graduating cadet or to take out their trainee during a break. We have people that are here for PCS, a permanent change of station, and they use our housing to fill that gap. But I think what's really important to note, that has gotten kind of left on the wayside, is that our neighbors are using us too. I have been approached many times over the years by somebody saying, hey, I have so-and-so coming into town, where should I, do you have a place for me that I can put them up in? It's happened in Cotton Town, it's happened in Elmwood Park, it's happened in Shandon, it's happened in Wales Garden, it's happened in Earlwood. And a lot of those people that are using the places are using them because they're making improvements to their property, they need somewhere to go. They're, they're making repairs, after Halloween, we had a huge influx, really any hurricane, we have this happen, any kind of bad inclement weather. People that are getting new HVC systems, electricity is out, people that are in the process of starting a separation from their spouse, this is providing a place for them to be close to their families and maintain some regularity. Our neighbors use them for friends, family, a staycation, a birth, family reunion, gap housing, when they're moving in and out of our community, or maybe they're going to a different house within the community. We've had tons of people for the pandemic and workforce housing, people that are here in the community, helping improve our utilities and our built environment, that are here for maybe just a short period. But regardless of if it's a few days, weeks, or months, STRs provide that flexibility. One thing my husband and I have always tried to do is reflect and listen to everybody that we speak to. We try to empathize with our neighbors, and we understand that we're all different and have different priorities and different backgrounds, and that we all see everything differently. We all have different opinions, but we're trying to contribute to the process, and we ask that you continue to let us do that at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Amy McKissick, I am a resident of Cotton Town. So I just wanted to speak to one particular part of the new ordinance for the second reading, and that's the part where it specifically says that STRs do not function as hotels, and I would like to respectfully disagree with that. When we were all gathered here, what was it, a month ago or so, the property manager at that time, he said, let me tell you about my favorite guest. He said, it's the person that comes in late in the evening, goes out, has dinner, spends the night, and leaves the next morning. And he finally said the quiet part out loud, that we function as a hotel, because that's exactly how a hotel functions. And so, also, if you don't believe his word, let me give you the words of a local hotel who, on their own, very own website, we're all very familiar with Hotel Trundle. They have a fabulous boutique hotel downtown, but what they also have is three STRs in Cotton Town. And by their very own language on their website, it says the following, extended state hotels in Columbia, South Carolina. So regardless of what people may portray, and do STRs provide a place, sure they do, but they provide the same place that a hotel does. And because of that, they do not belong in residential neighborhoods. I myself personally have one of Hartwood's STRs in my very backyard, I look at it every day, and I can tell you from personal experience, I have walked out my back door and seen things occurring with windows open, that you really shouldn't see in residential neighborhoods. So I respectfully ask the council, as you move forward, to really consider, is an STR really what they say they are? Because in every aspect, they function as a hotel. And if that's truly what they are, and in my opinion they are, then they should have to be responsible to the same health inspections, the same fire inspections, and the same zoning inspections that any other commercial industry is responsible for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Bergman.
We should have made y'all split time as a couple.
That's right.
Just kidding.
Hey, thank you all, appreciate the changes that were just discussed, I think that helps on the second.
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
Just so everyone can hear you, thank you.
Thanks for making the changes, I think some of the changes that were just discussed were positive changes, the one-night, the property management license. Appreciate you guys having us up here to speak, my name is David Bergman with Hartwood Furnish Homes, our office is at twenty-three hundred Wayne Street, we welcomed almost ten thousand guests here to the Midlands, and our team over here helped us do that, we have thirty employees, and we have a lot of, a lot of people who depend on us, from vendors and other folks that we work with, property owners, and obviously our team and ourselves. So this is an important thing for us. I'm going to kind of skip, it sounds like we'll have some more discussion later, but I'll kind of skip to just make my main point, and just keep it brief, which I think we heard from David Hatcher at the working session, I think he left open some things we can continue to discuss, like, we didn't hear about the data of incidences between short-term rentals and long-term rentals. I really want to see that data, if short-term rentals are having a lot greater incidence and prevalence of incidents on a per-unit basis, that would be an indicator to us as council that we should probably do something. But if it doesn't, I don't know, it might indicate something else, but I think without that data, and we talked about getting that data twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three at this point, and I just haven't seen it yet, so just think that that's something that's probably easy for them to pull and get, and would love to see it, as a data guy myself. Just help to kind of get through the anecdotes and emotions about things going on in our backyards that, you know, don't have any evidence. If we could just get down to the facts and see where those incidences actually are happening, that'll help that conversation, and we can all speak unemotionally about the topic. And I just ask that, before we make changes, let's get that data, let's look at the incidences, let's consider balance tools, there are balance tools out there that are being used by other municipalities, like Mount Pleasant, Charleston, sorry, North Charleston, and Folly, and Hilton Head, and there's a lot of good examples, and I think we don't need to follow in Greenville's footsteps all the time, and this is probably an area where we don't want to do that. So I appreciate y'all's time, and look forward to continuing the discussion.
Thank you.
Hello, Kevin Rush. Let's see, Ms. Bethany Storlasi is here to speak on the Saluda Riverwalk, item number
Good afternoon, yes, this is not an STR. I did have just a brief question about item number fifty-five. I was wondering if it will be discussed, the exact location, we know that it's going to be on the Saluda Riverwalk, but I was wondering if we're going to find out where on the Saluda Riverwalk today.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, that came out of our committee.
Committee, you're right.
It will be discussed.
It will?
The location site will.
Fantastic.
Be discussed today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there are four of the peace polls, but I didn't say the exact location.
Mr. Stephen Lopez, he didn't indicate which item he was here on, are you here to speak about an item that's on the agenda?
Hello, thank you for being available to listen to what I have to say, I've been living in Columbia for almost two years now, and we're very happy when we bought our home over in Whitehall, right near Seven Oaks Park, and the severity of the possibility of flooding was sort of sugar-coated to me, and about the whole neighborhood that lives butted up against this creek, which, I'm sorry.
Everybody's having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
So the creek that butts up against the back of our property and almost a whole row of our neighbors connects to what I believe is Kinley Creek, and a lot of people that have been living there a lot longer than I have, have said that this problem didn't really happen until all the shops on Harbison and the Costco was built. And from my little bit of investigating that I've had the opportunity to do, there's a retention pond that's behind Costco, and whatever's being mismanaged, whenever it rains, light or hard, a flood of water comes and washes away everything in all of our backyards. You know, I built a beautiful garden for my wife, it's gone. We can't let the kids play on the jungle gym I built for them, because every time it washes into our yard, there's glass, condoms, nails, building materials, and I've tried to just over the phone speak to people from Lexington County and Richland County, because we are right on that border there, and from Richland County, they say it's not our problem, because when it leaves Richland County, it goes into Lexington County. Lexington County says it's not our problem, because it comes from Richland County. So my aim here today is to just ask anyone here that's listening to please help give me some kind of guidance, or help me raise awareness on this.
The gentleman that's right behind you, if you'll see him before you leave, and get your address and everything, and let him see what he can do to help.
We love living here, and thank you for making such a wonderful town, and thank you for, again, for listening.
Hopefully we can help find a solution, but sorry you're going through that. I know it's always when you got, when you live in that kind of section, when there's multiple counties, city, and everything else, sometimes things get lost, but let's see if we can help you there.
Yes, sir, thanks again.
Yes, sir, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Rick Harmon, and I'm a resident of Elmwood Park. I appeared before you in June of this year to express concerns about the incompatibility of short-term rental properties operating in residential areas. I'm grateful that council is considering proposed Resolution R. twenty-two-five-sixty-six and Ordinance twenty-two-five-seventy-nine, which appear to address these concerns. I generally support their adoption and appreciate the opportunity to offer comments and observations. First, I'm not insensitive to the investments made by existing short-term rental properties located within Elmwood Park, and generally support their continued operation, provided they are well-regulated and maintain compliance with the provisions of proposed Ordinance twenty-two-five-sixty-four, including its retirement requirements for a minimum booking age, elimination of one-night stays, limits on capacity, requirements for designated parking and guest screening. Although I will note that this seems to be dynamic, and my comments are based on the ordinance as it was drafted and available over this weekend. These are reasonable and appropriate conditions for continued operation of short-term rental properties. I also support the notification requirements for households located immediately adjacent to the short-term rental, but observe that in Elmwood Park particularly, households located directly across the street and their immediately adjacent properties oftentimes are affected by operation of the short-term rentals. To that end, I would suggest defining the term adjacent properties, and consider broadening the definition to include these additional households. Over the longer term, I would suggest development of an online registry of permitted properties, including specifics of the property, its point of contact, and its regulatory compliance. As I expressed previously, the success of regulation rests on diligent enforcement, and publication of this information would establish public accountability for the short-term rental owner, promote awareness for residential owners, and provide a first point of contact to report infractions directly to the owner, rather than further burdening the administrative resources of the city for relatively minor concerns. As a potential concern, it is not entirely clear to me how existing short-term rental properties will be treated following adoption of the amended zoning ordinance. Presumably, the intent is to grandfather these properties in some way, to which I do not object. However, if the intent is to ultimately rezone these properties in conformance with the amended zoning ordinance, I'm not sure that permanently rezoning these properties as non-residential would best serve the interests of the neighborhood.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
I further presume that the recommendations of the Planning Commission will include these considerations, and trust that opportunity- considerations and trust that opportunities will be given for neighborhood engagement with commission to raise questions and provide input. I encourage repealing the current moratorium contemporaneously within the amended zoning ordinance rather than by separate action as proposed to avoid creation of any inadvertent window of opportunity by delay or absence of its enactment. Finally, I wish to thank City Manager Wilson, who responded with one of my emails at 11:00 PM, and City Clerk Hammond, both of whom so graciously assisted me in communicating with you back in August. They are among the finest examples of true dedication and exemplary, exemplary public service.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Vanessa Trailer?
Hello. My name's Vanessa Trailer. I'm a real estate agent for the past 10 years, a property manager, and the unfortunate property manager of the Lincoln Street incident. So we have, you know, written you guys multiple times, my husband Hart and I. This was a teen gun violence situation, and it's really difficult for us to feel like we have just gone through a very tragic, heartbreaking experience that is being used to just completely warp and change what has already been in place that was working positively for our city. And so, you know, we all desire 100% safety. I have literally thought through every aspect of this and how this could not have occurred. And the reality is evil exists, just like we saw in the recent events, and there's nothing we can ultimately do to have 100% safety, no matter if that's the schools we send our kids to, or, you know, the cars we drive in, whatever it may be. And so I would ask you, this was hard and this is, was truly horrible, and I would just ask you not to use this situation that we wish did not happen for something that is ultimately punishing a majority of people. As a real estate agent, I do have grave concerns. I mean, I cannot sell an Airbnb right now that is in a residential area because the permits are not transferable. I cannot switch even someone who, let's say, had a different property manager that went under, I can't even take them on if I wanted to, which I don't, by the way. I don't necessarily, I'm giving them to David or whoever else at this point. But no, at the end of the day, I've weighed a lot and I have ultimately come to that I'm still pro-STR. I'm still pro-economic freedom in this country. And I also just, you know, the real estate agent, I was invited to your campaign party. We are, we love individual property rights, and I don't think that you would have gotten the real estate agent vote that you got if we thought you even had one inkling that you would be standing in the way of individual property rights and how we can use our investments. I own my own real estate Airbnb in Rosewood, and I just sent you guys recent footage of a guest that was standing outside. And at the apartment complex at the end of the street, 10 gunshots go off. There's just an epidemic of issues, and it's a bigger problem than what we're currently dealing with. And I just would ask that you be wise in sifting out where the actual problem is and, you know, go from there.
Thank you for being here. I, I do want to clarify that, that the reason we're here is not just about a shooting, okay? The, the, the reason we're here is two years ago, we said we would collect data and we would revisit everything. And since we've collected that data, we have over 20% of illegal operating Airbnbs out there that are causing problems. We got owners who are lying on their applications and then advertising falsely. So there's a lot of things we've got to put together, but I, I just want you to know, this isn't about just, you know, the shooting was horrible and shootings happen, and the one thing that we've been pushing is hard to reduce crime everywhere. But this is about an overhaul, creating an opportunity for things to coexist. Right now, it's not working very well because we got too many folks that are not abiding by the law. We got too many people who are false advertising. We got too many people not taking responsibility of those properties. Just like long-term rentals and homeowners, we have a process we have to go through. We're refining this. It was from day one, we always said there was going to be some changes. Now, we're taking a lot of input, and the reason why we're not moving forward on the other, the other part of the moratorium is because there's some really good information that's been shared with us from all sides that we believe need to be incorporated to provide a better atmosphere at the same time for people to understand that we cannot just allow 20% of an industry to go out there. It's 139 units. It's not a small amount. You know, and these folks are evading, so, you know, I just want you to know, it's, it's about the global picture, and that's why we're taking our time. And it may be inconvenient for some folks, but I think it's going to be better in the long run for everybody because I don't think that people want to put people out of business, but we also have a responsibility to a whole community. That's neighborhoods, businesses combined. The two of them have to coexist. You can't have one without the other. I think that's where we're headed, but I appreciate you taking the time being here today.
Yeah, I would just encourage you not to drag it out with hurting those that are operating legally or trying to desire to do business because I do know of a lot of active, or some specific active, you know, real estate deals that have not been able to go through because of the way things are currently set up. I still think there's an opportunity to lift the moratorium and continue to work on the current ordinance that we have in place to positively affect Columbia.
Well, hopefully that's going to happen sooner than later, that we can move forward with a plan that, that benefits all, all the parties in this room because that's, that's our goal. We represent 150,000 people, so we'll make sure we're, we're looking at, at all aspects. So, thank you.
Matt Carroll?
Oh, thank you for listening to our thoughts today. I've got a couple new points that just came up. I'm going to try to add and still be within my three minutes. I understand, you know, I was part of the group, a small group, two years ago that sat with Councilman Duval and David and neighborhood leaders and came up with a lot of this, went back and forth. And I understand that it was, hey, we're going to try this for a while, we're going to gather data and then we'll, we'll reevaluate, right? At that time, it was there's going to be two city employees that are hired to help manage this and help, you know, all the, all the short-term rental fees are going to come in and we're going to have two employees that are going to help regulate and help manage and, you know, go after the bad actors. And I just don't think that that's happened. And I hear you saying that we have 20% bad actors out there. What's happened to that 20%? Get rid of them. Take their licenses. If they're bad actor, there's, there's rules in place, right? We know that they're breaking those rules.
And that's what we're doing.
Well, no, you're not. You're, you're saying we don't want this anymore.
No, that's not what we're saying, Matt.
Make no mistake, it is. Because when you, when you send short-term rentals into commercial zoning, it takes away the entire essence of what a short-term rental is. So i- it's easy to say we're going to send them into commercial districts and we're not, we're not taking away, we're not putting anybody out of business, but make no mistake, you are. And there's rules in place that have not been being enforced. And, and it seems very simple to say, hey, we have rules, let's enforce them and get rid of the 20% bad actors. And then the 80% that are following the rules and doing everything that needs to be done, continue operating the way they were. And when there's bad actors, they're.
But you're operating right now. We haven't taken that right away from you.
But people are not going to be able to.
That argument you just said doesn't.
Just, just like David said, just like people earlier said, you can't, you can't just say, this is my business, it's going to be this forever. Because things happen. Neighborhoods change, different desires, different areas of town become popular. If you can't continue to pivot and be dynamic with that, you can't continue to operate a business. You know, if you have a restaurant in a, in an area of town that becomes not as popular, you want to be able to go put a restaurant in a different part of town that's more popular. And what you're saying is, nope, you can't do that. You've got to stay here. And you can't adjust with how that works. So I would also ask you to consider, where do you, when you go to the beach or when you go to the mountains, does, does all, does everyone just stay in a hotel when you go to those places? Or do you stay at a beach house or a mountain house? Because I would like the ability to have people stay in a place like that in Columbia. A lot of people go to the beach and they stay at a beach house because they want that environment. They don't want to stay at a hotel at the beach. We're taking that ability away from people by doing what you guys are doing with the adjustments to the ordinance. I would also just, there's things I've sent in via email, things like no local guests. I, I think that that really needs to be looked at, that we're supposed to, I don't know if that's a change. I, I didn't hear that be a change. Okay, it's not in there anymore. Thank you. I think my time's up.
But it, but I will tell you that the local guest piece about you having the ability to cancel came from the STR community, didn't come from somebody else.
Initially, initially, I, I thought it said that there was no, there was no short-term guests allowed.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that that is not something that's going to stay in there because there are a lot of people that, like was said earlier, there's house renovations or a flood happens or something happens where people, you know, local.
I spoke to a wonderful, nice lady who's lived in three or four.
Right.
And she thinks there needs to be some more regulation around it based on her experience.
Sure.
But at the same time, it gave her an opportunity to get a feel.
Sure.
That's why we're not trying to get rid of.
Sure.
STRs, but we do have to change the way things are. And I think we're, what we're seeing in, in the enforcement are things that we know are problems, so we're addressing those. And as we move forward, having the right and appropriate places, just like there's a right place for a duplex, just like there's a right place for a quadruplex.
Sure.
They're not in the middle of a block. And, I mean, there are ways to do things that benefit the protection of quality of life for both the business and the other, and I think that's where we're headed.
Very good. Thank you.
Johnny McConnelly?
You can go ahead and remove that name.
Thank you. Denise Wellman?
Good afternoon, y'all. I'm Denise Wellman, President of Cotton Town. And I'd like to first tell you how much we appreciate all the time and effort you have put into this issue. I know you have spent untold hours listening to people, and we also appreciate you slowing things down and really looking at best practices, other ways that this could be handled. And thanks to the city staff too, because I know they have been a real part of this. Mr. Mayor, I believe I understood that you said that we're not taking any action on the moratorium today.
That's correct.
I want to make sure that I know what's going to happen if the Planning Commission doesn't approve the zoning changes.
Well, two things that go, that the Planning Commission is a, a recommendation body.
Right.
The ultimate say happens right here between these seven people. But that Planning Commission will be a public hearing where people, they'll go through ordinance, and then it will come to us and it go through the process. Ultimately, decisions here, hopefully with the changes that will be recommended, the opportunity for all the public to have to look at the maps and look at appropriate places and how that things, I think the global picture will be much better. Not having maps is part of a hard discussion with folks too, to really understand showing existing where potentially you could be, why it's important in having that. But ultimately, the decision is made here. But we're going through the legal process that we need to go through if we bring in a new ordinance to address the issue at hand.
The moratorium is really important to neighborhoods until we can get some, this resolved, so I appreciate that.
But we, yeah, I mean, the whole goal for us to move, to move the Planning Commission meeting out is to make sure we get this out to all the folks that are affected, neighborhoods and STR owners, businesses. I mean, we've got folks who have one unit and it's, it's their retirement.
Right.
We want to make sure that we're, we're listening. I've gotten some really, really good feedback from folks in the last week or so that I found to actually make a lot of sense. And council has, has put in some great input that makes a lot of sense and addresses some of the issues which I think will, will really hopefully find a fine balance. You know, is, is everybody going to be 100% happy? No, that means we probably did the right thing. So hopefully, as y'all see things progress, but we're going to go through the system, but ultimately, the decision stays here.
We thank you very much.
John Wilkinson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Wilson. My name is John Wilkinson. I'm the President of the Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association. And just like to add our thanks for the work over the last couple of months on this topic and really over the last two years. And also want to thank all of our neighbors, many who are here tonight for all of their involvement in this process. We have a very, as you may know, very active neighborhood association with over 180 members and great participation. We conducted a neighborhood survey a few weeks ago, and the results were interesting. 80% of our neighbors who participated in the survey are opposed to this mini-hotel model, this non-owner-occupied STR model. But 80% are also in favor of STRs more broadly. In fact, I was excited to see in the news this morning about the, the four new STRs that were announced in the business. So we agreed that there's a place for them in our community. My own family's used them. We just questioned if that's in residential zones or in some of these other zones. So we are supportive of the resolution to prohibit them in residential zones. And if we're looking at data, which is certainly important, I think we also need to consider the quality of that data and the completeness of that data. Because we can also think of very many specific active concerns from our neighbors. So we appreciate your deliberate consideration of this and, and fast action on it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim Prater?
Thank you, sir.
That's the best comment all night.
Ms. Elaine Frick is here to speak on the Peace Pole Project. The Peace Pole Project.
Peace Pole for the riverfront.
Thank you very much. I, I really appreciate, I want to thank you. I'm here to not complain or not to suggest anything, but to thank you. For those who don't know, on page 20, it's number 55, it's approving installation of a public art project at Saluda Riverwalk. A number of years ago, a city council member helped the first public peace pole project, the Vista Peace Pole, happened down on Saluda, on Senate Street, across from the Hilton Hotel and the Convention Center. Has a bell you can ring. It's, people may not know, and I have little flyers if they'd like it, but a peace pole says in four to eight languages, the expression, "May peace prevail on earth." The one down at the Vista Peace Pole has eight very interesting ones done by a local artist. I'm here representing the Columbia Peace Pole Initiative. So we're here to make sure that there are a lot of peace poles around the city. And you say, why? Well, there are over 250,000 around the world. And what it does to say, "May peace prevail on earth," says not only the world, but countries and cities and neighborhoods and families want peace. And that expressing that over and over again, whether it's at a police substation or at a school or at a church, that's important everywhere we say it. So thank you for hopefully approving this Persimmon Peace Pole, which is the name. A local artist has created it and is here to get it set up. I've just talked with your good city staff that are working on the designation. So when you go to Saluda Riverwalk, you'll be able, within six months or a year, to be able to see this very dynamic, colorful public peace pole. And I'm just very grateful to all of you, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Freeman, for all your work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we've ever had anybody say thanks before. Do you want to get a picture with her?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? This particular project went through the Arts Historic Preservation and Philanthropy Committee, and Ms. Frick, thank you for your patience in working with us. One thing about the Persimmon Peace Pole Project is there are going to be seeds from a persimmon, persimmon tree that survived the Hiroshima bombing in Japan. We planted around the pole. I think it's a testament to perseverance of peace. In our country today, we need that more than ever now. So I think it's coming at a relevant time, and thank you for your patience. And the artist is great too, so once this goes on the riverfront, I think everybody should go out there and check it out and taste the persimmon if you've never had one before. They're terrible.
They're a little sour.
All right, we have Ellen Bundy. All right, we have Ellen Bundy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
And I would like to thank you all for working so hard on this because it's, you know, at first I thought it'd be a simple thing to do, but it's not. Preparing to speak this afternoon, I, I did my Google and you are in very good company. Paris, Berlin, London, New York and Barcelona, they didn't bother with the American cities. But they cited four, four reasons why short-term rentals can be bad. Housing affordability, which is something we all care about. Um, it reduces the available long-term rentals. And we have a lot of long-term rentals in Elmwood Park. And these, um, short-term rentals really drive up the cost. I mean, these people are investors, they've got cash and they get in there before ordinary people can get there. Tax revenue, now you guys don't care about tax revenue, but traditional hotels pay a lot of money and they generate a lot of revenue. So you should care about that. I'm surprised that the hotels have not really complained about this. Now Airbnb apparently sent something out to all their people to come to this afternoon. Regulatory compliance, I mean, it's a problem and residential neighborhoods are not the place to have something that needs that much regulation. So I hope you keep working hard and I hope we don't have any more short-term rentals in Elmwood Park, but I, I think we're going the right direction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Leave that sit. The remaining individuals will speak at the end of the meeting.
All right, we'll keep on moving with the people's business.
Mr. Mayor and council, as we transition into our presentations, I told you I had a few moments of personal privilege today. So the first, I'm going to ask Mr. Justin Stevens, our interim, um, Director of Public Relations, Media and Marketing to come forward. Because we know that you all absolutely always look for this young lady when you're out in the community. And it just shows that she, I hope Justin's in the room, he's probably in the background doing something else. Uh-oh. He's on the phone. Uh-oh. Timing's everything. Well, I'll tee it up anyway and ask Ms. Veronica Walker to come forward.
Here he comes.
Because she is celebrating her 10 years with the City of Columbia.
Hold the applause. Hold the applause. She's coming up the elevator right now.
Oh. Well, as she comes in from the elevator.
Yeah, she's coming up the elevator now. Everyone's surprised.
If you don't know Ms. Veronica, you have clearly not been out in our community somewhere. She is everywhere, doing everything. That's where she's not supposed to be here.
Told her to wait down, it was a packed room, told her to wait down.
Hopefully she can get up on the elevator. Oh, gosh.
She was in her office right beside the elevator. Yeah, yeah, I called her. She's on. A good transition.
Let everyone else.
Maybe we have to wait a minute.
As everyone else departs that needed to depart. Can't plan it. I try.
Here she comes.
Thank you. It's been a dream of a lifetime.
Well, for us as well, Ms. Veronica. Thank you for all you do.
Got your gift as well, your pen. And thank you for all your service here for 10 years and more to come.
More to come, more to come.
Say a word. The floor is yours. Oh, no, I.
Oh, can't ask for this.
I don't know many people who truly can say that when they look back at their career that it's been good. When I look back at my 10 years here at the City of Columbia, it's been better than good.
Thank you.
She, you know, she's a lady of not many words all the time, but so impactful. And so another lady who is so fundamental to the culture of the city and represents such an example every single day, both of them do, is our own city clerk, Ms. Erica Hammond. And so, give me, give me a moment. She doesn't, I think she knows she's received, she obviously knows she's received this, but she doesn't know, I know she's received this. So our city clerk, and this is from Don Abrahamson, the, uh, 2MC president, but basically like nationally recognized city clerks. So Erica has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, MMC, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Incorporated. It is only, it is only granted to municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and have a record of significant contributions to their local government, community and state. Founded in 1947, 14,000 members throughout the United States, Canada and 15 other countries. The mission is to enhance the educational opportunities and professional development of its diverse membership. In light of different things going on right now in our world, we felt like, and Ms. Abrahamson felt like it was necessary for all in local government to keep pace with the growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. Your city can take immense pride in Erica's educational accomplishments and achievement of this milestone. On behalf of the International Institute, am I saying this right, Erica? Of Municipal Clerks Board of Directors, I am honored to endorse the conferring of MMC status and designation to Erica D. M. Hammond, MMC of City of Columbia. We share your pride in this achievement and we applaud your support of the role Erica plays in your city. Yeah.
Constitution Week Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor.
Y'all, y'all line up by the podium right there. I don't know who's going to talk. Who's, who's talking?
We'll let her out so she can talk.
All right. Well, I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'm going to hand you the floor, if that's okay, madam. So September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution in 1787 by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper according to official recognition to the supreme law of our land. Public Law 915 authorizes the issuance of proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17th through 23rd of September as Constitution Week. Well, we're not going to let the president be the only one. So therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the Mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with these fellow, uh, members of council, do hereby proclaim September 17th, uh, through the 23rd of 2025 as Constitution Week in Columbia, South Carolina, along with in the United States.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, I'd like to also be one to thank you, uh, for designating this as Constitution Week. And also thank Mr. Brennan for coming to our conference last March, and we are looking forward to you coming again.
I was in Korea.
Yes.
It was hard to make it for the morning.
Well, we're glad to see you back and thank you so much. And I hope that you all will have a copy of the Constitution and understand how grateful we all are to live in this wonderful country. Thank you.
Since everybody's lined up perfectly, you know.
Why waste the opportunity?
You got everyone?
I will never miss one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next presentation is the National Clean Energy Week Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor. Councilman Peter Brown.
All right, so, uh, I want to introduce, uh, my friend, partner and business associate, Kevin O'Hara, to come to the podium. Um, Kevin's going to, uh, accept this award or proclamation on all of us that are involved in, uh, clean energy business. Kevin is, uh, not only my partner, but he's a friend. We went to kindergarten together and have known each other for the last 55 years. Kevin is our president and, uh, CEO of Colite Technologies, um, which is, uh, born in Colite but raised by Kevin. Um, and, uh, in case you haven't, don't know, Colite Technologies is located at, on Millwood Road near Gervais Street. Uh, we renovated the old Nut All Tire building into a really amazing, um, uh, office space and warehouse space that's really helped that area a lot. I would like to also say that, uh, Colite Technologies focuses on commercial, solar and lighting. Um, and to be honest with you, uh, uh, we're going to have more and more investment like this in, in our community, in our county, our state. Um, and I just want to turn it over to Kevin, say a few words, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, um, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I've heard a lot of thank yous. I don't know what Councilman Brown was talking about. You guys never get thank yous, but, um, and I also want to admit, this is the very first time in my entire life that I have been to a city council meeting of any sort in any place.
See what you've been missing?
Exactly. But, uh, I do want to thank you for recognizing and having the vision around clean energy. And it's not because it's the right thing to do, it's because it's the logical economic thing to do. And we've built a very successful business right here in our town, my town, even though I was gone for 30 years. I came back, got together with my great friend, Councilman Brown, and built this business. And we're excited about it. And I also want to call out Councilman Dow for his interest in helping us to continue to bring investment to that area of the city, uh, where we renovated the old Nut All Tire building. And we are incredibly proud of that and invite anyone who wants to come by and see it, particularly those who knew it as Nut All, uh, and what it is today. But again, thank you for the vision. We're excited to be here and we're going to continue to plug away.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Oh, yeah, we're going to pick out a reading at first.
All right. Across Columbia, clean and readily abundant forms of energy are powering more homes and businesses than ever before. And clean energy, including generation from renewable sources such as wind, solar and hydro sources, as well as nuclear, natural gas and energy storage, is part of our country's energy future. And South Carolina's four nuclear power plants provide 55% of the state's net electricity generation in 2022. And it was the third largest producer of nuclear power in the nation. And the clean energy sector is a growing part of the economy and has been a key driver of economic growth in the Palmetto State in recent years. And clean energy employed over 57,593 people in South Carolina in 2024, with the number of clean energy jobs growing 1.8% between 2022 and 2023. Solar power, hydropower and biomass are South Carolina's primary source of renewable energy, accounting for 7% of the state's total net generation. As of 2022, solar energy production has more than tripled since 2018, with more available capacity expected in 2024. Clean energy jobs are inherently local, exempt from outsourcing due to the onsite nature of construction, installation, maintenance and contribute to the growth of local communities. So therefore, he is Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with his fellow members of city council. We do hereby proclaim September 15th through 19th, 2025, as National Clean Energy Week in the great city of Columbia and urge all fellow citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. Thank you.
Did I see the chief here? So.
We definitely see him on this flyer.
I know. I'm sitting here going, why would they pick somebody like that to be their ambassador?
So this is the Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor.
Chief and all the folks that are here for the sickle cell awareness, if you, you want to come up to the podium, first of all, thank you for your tireless efforts and continuing to, to move forward the story. As you know, September is National Sickle Cell Awareness Month. Um, very fortunate to have our chief who's willing to give his time and effort to be, uh, the 2025 Ambassador for Awareness. Um, I do want to take a minute and read the proclamation and then I would like to, to give the floor to you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, uh, share, allow you to share some words. Sickle cell disease is a group of inherited red blood cell disorders that causes red blood cells to elongate and clog blood vessels, therefore affecting all body systems. The World Health Organization estimates that each year that more than 250,000 babies worldwide are born with sickle cell disease. Sickle cell is one of the 11 severe chronic diseases affecting children in South Carolina. Approximately one of every 400 African-Americans born in South Carolina has sickle cell disease and one in 13 African-American in South Carolina carries the sickle cell trait gene. Throughout, though currently no universal cure for sickle cell disease exists, quality treatment and disease management can prevent needless deaths and suffering. Provisions of genetic testing and counseling services can serve to greatly impact the prevalence of sickle cell disease through family planning and other prevention services. The James R. Clark Memorial Sickle Cell Foundation Medical Services Network provides an effective approach to treatment and management, prevention services, which all serve to elevate this, suff, alleviate, excuse me, the suffering and enhance the lives of citizens with sickle cell disease and those who are at risk in the Midlands. I had some folks on my podcast that work at the hospital, uh, work with camp chemo and also work with the kids and the stories they were sharing and the impact that the community plays really to help give relief and support to these families. And, um, their, their plea was, is let's don't stop. There's not a cure here. We got to continue to do that. So I, I will, first of all, We got to continue to do that. So I will, first of all, on behalf of our citizens, thank you all for the work that you do. Thank you for constantly making sure that, I know September is Awareness Month, but y'all are talking about it twelve months a year.
Yes, sir.
You're out there in the community, you're outreaching, you're impacting lives, and we want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I would like to say good evening. And I want to begin by thanking the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, his wonderful staff here at the city, and members of city council for the opportunity to acknowledge September as Sickle Cell Disease Awareness Month, and to encourage participation in our nineteenth annual Dr. James R. Clark Sickle Cell Walk. As stated, the World Health Organization estimates that approximately seven point seventy-four million individuals are affected globally with Sickle Cell Disease. Approximately five thousand of those individuals live here, right here in South Carolina. Our annual Sickle Cell Walk is held each year to honor these individuals living daily with this chronic and debilitating illness. Proceeds from the walk benefit our scholarship fund, which assists students with Sickle Cell Disease in their pursuits for higher education. The nineteenth annual walk will be held on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, at MLK Park. On-site registration begins at seven thirty a.m., and pre-walk ceremony begins at eight o'clock a.m. Participants can register at strictlyrunning.com or www.jamesrclarkssicklecell.org. The James R. Clark Sickle Cell Foundation has been very, very fortunate to have support of numerous community advocates to serve as walk ambassadors, including the Honorable Mayor Steve Benjamin and Councilwoman Tamika Isaac-Divine. We are honored this year to have another community champion and one of our city's finest, Chief R. B. D. Jenkins, that all of you are familiar with. Chief Jenkins of the Fire Department is a longstanding advocate, volunteer, and supporter of the mission and goals of the James R. Clark Memorial Sickle Cell Foundation, and we are honored to have his service. Also, we have represented here tonight two wonderful families who are advocates and have received the benefits of our walk's purpose and mission for our scholarship fund, the Green Family. The Green Family is founders of the Beast John Group, and their son Brayden Green is a sophomore at the University of South Carolina.
Go Cots!
Yes, yes, go Cots, majoring in computer engineering, and we're so proud.
Congratulations.
We also have here the Stevenson and Bitson family, Ms. Willie Stevenson. Her daughter Maya just graduated from Emory Riddle Aeronautical University with a Bachelor's of Science in Medical Engineering.
Wow.
Mechanical Engineering, forgive me, mechanical engineering. She's not here tonight because she's in Arizona working on her master's degree.
Congratulations.
As a result of this scholarship fund and this walk, we have awarded over forty-one scholarships. And with boots on the ground and individuals like Chief Jenkins steering the lead, we know that we can produce many, many more of these scholarships. Also, before I let Chief speak, we also have present our CHWs from the James R. Clark Memorial Sickle Cell Foundation.
Thank you for being here.
And I just want to quickly say I am retiring, but I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the City of Columbia. You have graciously allowed me to come year after year after year. You presented this proclamation, and you've supported this work and this is, and this cause. And I will soon be passing the torch to our community workers. So thank you. As the other speaker said.
You still got to come visit.
Yes, sir, I will.
We're not going to know what to do when we look out in September and you're not standing there.
I'll be in the background. I'll be in the background working or assisting them, but I won't be in the forefront. But I do want to say thank you. And at this time, we're going to have Chief Jenkins come forward. Excuse me, Chief.
Well, y'all know I'm not a long speaker. I just want to say that, thank you all for this proclamation because it is an honor. And speaking for one that have relatives who, you know, got Sickle Cell, or they got your traits, it's an honor to be selected as the walk ambassador. But the other thing also is that, you know, I'm honored to represent a person who I really admire a whole lot, and that is James R. Clark. When my mother was sick, although she didn't have Sickle Cell, but when she was sick years ago, he was the one that nursed her back to fine health. And my mother is ninety-three years old today, and she would not have made it without Dr. Clark. So I'm very appreciative to represent his name and also this foundation. And I encourage each one of you to come out and join the walk and just participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Young girl farmer's land.
All right, I'll be around.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, at this time, we will move into a period of Other Matters, item number five, Approval of Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Five, Two Thousand and Twenty-Six Special Revenue allocations. Ms. Missy Coffin, our Assistant City Manager for Strategic Initiatives and Innovation, can assist. This, again, is the item carried over from your work session today, and we really appreciate the time that council gave to reviewing the recommendations.
So I move that city council approved one-time funding recommendations. State accommodations, five percent general purpose fund balance, four thousand, forty thousand dollars to Urban League. Richland County Education Partners, twenty-five thousand. Columbia Council of Neighborhoods, twenty thousand. Made with Cola Love, one hundred thousand. From the two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six Hospitality Budget Reserve Allocation Funding, Five Points Association for a hundred and fifty thousand. Experience Columbia for a hundred and fifty thousand. Public Works Holiday Decorations, twenty-five thousand. The Drew Wellness Center, a hundred and seventy thousand. The Saluda Greenway Comfort Station, two hundred thousand. Finley Park Pickleball Fencing and Food Trucks, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. Woodland Park Outdoor Restrooms, a hundred and thirty thousand. And hospitality tax remaining proceeds to the Southeast Park Center Project Amendment for six hundred thousand.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Sure, ma'am. It's a move.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, council is asked to approve the installation of one speed hump on Medical Drive as requested by the Public Works Department and reviewed and approved by both the Columbia Fire Department and the Columbia Police Department.
It's a move.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item seven, council is asked to approve the installation of one speed hump on Etowah Avenue as requested by the Public Works Department.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
The consent agenda consists of items eight through thirty-eight for council's consideration.
It's a move.
It's a move. Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? There's a lot of contracts on here they're renewing for professional services. They're working through a lot of improvements, radio equipment that's being purchased, fire station equipment, our consultants, our, some of our contracts to help us get things done, including waste management. We need to make sure we do that. New equipment that we're getting for both solid waste and water distribution. Lot happening, a lot of dollars being spent to improve the quality of life in Columbia and give our employees the tools that they need to make sure that they can do that. So with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Absolutely. Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item thirty-nine, under consideration of bids, contracts, and change orders, council is asked to approve Contract Amendment Number Four for Project PK zero zero five six zero eight, the Finley Park Revitalization and Construction Services as requested by the Parks and Recreation Department. On September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, the award to Mashburn Construction Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The current term of the contract ends on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-six, and the contractor is located here in Columbia.
It's a move.
And note for the record, for the public, some of the money that we appropriated earlier is to cover this contract for the fencing and the pickleball and the other things that were there. Just, just so folks know, that's, that's, that's what that funding is for.
The people love pickleball.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
I'm sorry, who made the second? I know, got the motion from Mr. Bailey.
Yeah, there, I thought Reverend McDowell seconded it.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Again, many thanks to city council for your ongoing support of the Finley Park project revitalizing. This is one of the most significant projects we've done of late, and we look forward to the community seeing it on November the fifteenth. Our public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters starts with item forty, and Ms. Hampton is present. It's the Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to Include Twenty-six oh eight Cardinal Street as a Type Three landmark.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Yes, this is a, the proposal is to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to classify this as a Type Three landmark.
Ms., just for the public record, could you just let people know what a Type Three landmark is?
Certainly. So we have three tiers with the significance level, one being of great significance nationally or architecturally, two is of middling, and three certainly does have significance but maybe not as great. These were homes that were built for physicians, doctors at the Bull Street campus. And so these were some of the more significant physicians there, and they were built across the street. And so while this is in the Cotton Town District, the house itself being a mid-century modern did not contribute to that district. And so this designation will actually list it in and of itself.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this designation?
No one has signed up. So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item forty-one is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for thirty-four oh four two notch, thirty-four twenty-two two notch, and one-one-three-eight Head Street. It is a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of community activity corridor, and a zoning of community activity corridor.
So is there anybody here to speak for or against this property, this annexation and map amendment?
Ms. Diane Wiley signed up to speak.
Ms. Wiley.
Yes.
Please come forward.
First, I want to say thank you for, Representative Bailey, Mr. McDowell, for coming out to our church function.
We agree.
Okay. I just want to know what y'all can put there in it, what it's on for. I didn't see a zoning sign.
So right now, it's in the, in the county, and it's mixed residential, high-density, and general commercial.
Okay. And I wanted to say something about what was going on. We've been going through this for a long time about rentals. We got quite a few undocumented rentals in our neighborhood. They not following the law. You know, I know people need to do what they need to do to make money, but they think we not looking.
But you're sharing that information with us, right?
Yes. I want you to know, you know, I'm gonna tell it if you ain't doing right.
I know you will, but I just want to make sure we get the information.
But what I'm saying, we, and y'all know what went on in our neighborhood with the bus thing. They came in our neighborhood like it's nothing. And, and, and that's got to stop.
It's in the process.
But, but we got some homes that's Airbnb too, but they not like that, like other things. I wanted to say something on that. And, you know, something got to be done, you know, because they do have little wild parties and stuff.
You need to report them.
And I believe in making money, but don't come in our neighborhood messing up in other neighborhoods. We are the core of Columbia, the resident. I know you want to spend money and make money, but not in our neighborhoods. And I'm gonna tell on you. I don't care.
Why you looking at me?
Because, because, I'm gonna tell you what, I'm gonna tell you what, your business, that same man was ugly to me, the place that you, you brought, Nut All. I'm having trouble with him now. But anyway.
That's not his.
I just bought his, I bought his building.
But you done brought the business up, but he and I.
He bought the one on Millwood.
Oh, okay.
I accept your apology, Ms. Wiley.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but I be looking. I ride. I ride every night.
This is how rumors get started.
Okay. I accept your apology, and I hope you accept mine.
Thank God she's on Instagram.
But I want to thank you. You know, I don't want to score y'all all the time, but you know, this is where I live. And, and if you ain't coming right, I'm gonna tell on you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley.
Been a teller-tale all my life.
All right, we're square. We're good.
You good with this?
We're good.
Now?
Yeah, you know, just as long as it's not those other stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
Liquor stores.
Ma'am.
Tattoos and stuff.
This is all good stuff.
And Chief, excuse me, Chief Hallbrook and Jenkins, I want to thank them for coming.
Is there anybody else signed up? Is there a motion? Got a motion from the councilman for District Two? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Bailey. Any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item forty-two is a zoning map amendment for a portion of one fifty-one Clemson Road. The request is to rezone the property from mixed use to mixed use with the outdoor advertising sign overlay to allow an outdoor advertising sign.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mason Sullivan. I'm a representative of Lamar Advertising as the real estate manager. I just wanted to come up and make myself available and say hello, and thanks for consideration on this matter. I really selfishly wanted to commend I really selfishly wanted to commend um our recent interactions over the last two to three years with both the Planning Department, the Forestry Department, the Business Licensing Department, and the building officials who have been second to none, the best municipal staff members that we could ever work with, including Mr. Livinghead, who's extremely informative and helpful, and Ms. Statler and those others. This is a uh request of our company to exercise the existing ordinance to take down two billboards or like square footage is the um, there's a replacement square footage, just to rebuild uh another one in a location that is um acceptable or suitable for billboards. This is a location also.
Do we get to kick the two that come down?
We had to take two billboards down to rebuild this one, yes, sir.
Have you done it already?
We have.
Uh too bad, because I got a great suggestion.
That's fair.
Or at least change the advertiser that's on it. I'm trying to recruit businesses, and when you have something that's selling couple novelties, it doesn't help me attract businesses into that neighborhood, so.
Absolutely open to conversation later.
I'm gonna be calling you on that one.
Please, sir. But I I would just note that the Clemson Road Corridor uh in this area is somewhat mostly commercial, at least on the frontage, and um I'll I'll stand by if there's any questions on behalf of the company, but thank you all for your time and.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Motion for approval. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second. Well, I have some questions um.
Mr. Bailey.
For staff. Just for my own edification.
So we have, for clarity, we have a motion and a second, and we're in discussion period.
Um what was staff's reason for recommending a denial?
The property across the street, uh the Chimney Ridge subdivision is in the county. If it were in the city, it would be classified under our ordinance as a base residential zoning district, which would not permit the location of this billboard here. But because it's in the county, our ordinance doesn't recognize it.
Were there any um complaints or concerns brought to y'all from the neighborhood?
We've not heard any, and we've not heard any um since the planning commission, no.
So the staff's recommendation simply just because if it wasn't city, it would not be approved?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh what kind of signage was put out, you know, we always hear about signage promoting this.
So we would have had our our rezoning signs out that that are along this the frontage.
Perfect, thank you.
Move the question.
Any other question?
No.
Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes your zoning public hearing, thank you.
We're gonna defer item forty-three, is there a second to defer?
Mr. Mayor, um I'd like to read something into the record, Ms. Hammond.
Yeah.
I'll be recusing myself from this vote and future STR votes. As a historic commercial real estate developer, I have an ownership share in a downtown commercially-zoned property that is currently under construction and set to be complete in spring of twenty twenty-six. The future residential cottages will have the potential for long-term, midterm, and short-term offerings. For that future potential, I'll be abstaining from this vote and future STR votes per recommendation of city legal staff. Thank you.
All right. So do we have a second for deferral?
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance's second reading, item forty-four, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five zero six four, amending the nineteen ninety-eight Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter Five Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Nine, Short-Term Rental Regulations. The first reading approval was given on August the fifth, twenty twenty-five, and Mr. Mayor, I think you will read some additional um amendments.
So in addition to the changes already outlined in section five dash four oh one, the definition of responsible local representative, we are not adding the the requirement that the responsible local representative have a property manager's license. We're only adding that the last sentence, the responsible local representative may be the property manager or his or her designee. In section five dash four oh two subsection eight, the minimum guest age is changed from eighteen in the original ordinance to twenty-one. This is um different than we had discussed previously. In section five four oh two sec subsection nine, the minimum stay will not be edited, it will remain at one night. In section five four oh two subsection twelve, we will not be adding the last sentence and the proposed edit. We will only be adding these parking spaces cannot be street parking. In section five four oh two subsection sixteen, the proposed language state and local bookings must be canceled. This has been changed to state such bookings may be canceled. In section five four oh three subsection A, the second and third sentences will be deleted. These reflect grace periods during the original implementation of STR permitting process. Removing them will prevent future misunderstandings that may include the idea that a new STR can function for any period of time without a permit. In section five four one zero, we are adding the language to make each violation of the ordinance punishable by a five-hundred-dollar fine if the owner does not comply within after a fifteen-day notice period. The full section will read, "The failure of an STR owner to obtain a permit in accordance to and abide by the provisions of this section within fifteen days after notice of noncompliance shall sub- shall result in an administrative penalty of five hundred per offense. Each day of the violation will be considered a separate offense." With that, I'll move the motion forward.
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance's first reading, item forty-five, I believe, is this also a deferral?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to defer item forty-five?
It was a part of the amendment to the agenda.
Huh?
It was a part of the amendment to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Never mind, we'll move on.
Oh, no, it it was.
We didn't adopt it in the beginning?
Thank you.
No, so sorry about that.
I have a motion to defer, is there a second?
Second.
So moved.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
And I know um Councilmember Brennan's previous statement also relates to item forty-five.
Yes.
For the record. Item forty-six, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five zero seven one, approval for conveyance of tract fifteen, being a portion of a Columbia Northeast Fire and Police Station located at four-four-six Beers Creek Church Road to the South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussions, questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item forty-seven, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five zero seven two, amending the business license ordinance of the City of Columbia to update the class schedule as required by Act one seven six of twenty twenty.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item forty-eight, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five zero seven six, authorizing the City of Columbia, South Carolina, execute and deliver an equipment lease purchase agreement in the amount of not exceeding four million dollars.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ammon- um the amended item forty-nine reads, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five zero seven seven, authorizing the city manager to execute leases for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Housing and Urban Development flood properties acquired through the FEMA Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act for one-six-five-one Roslyn Drive.
So moved.
We're only doing one of the Roslands?
Yes, sir, that was part of the, that was the amendment at the beginning.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Um we got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Um do we know a date on the other one by chance?
Indeed, I think they decided they did not want to move forward, yes, sir.
Thanks for the clarification, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert. Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item fifty, ordinance number two thousand twenty-five zero seven eight, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, Vulcan Development LLC. It was endorsed by the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Resolutions, item fifty-one, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero five seven, authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as a portion of Ashcroft Circle, Brockway Drive, Clearme- Clearmead Way, and Derwin Way located in Ashcroft Phase One.
So moved.
We got a motion, is there a second? It's in the Ashcroft. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, any further discussion or questions? Council, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item fifty-two, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero five eight, authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as Old LaGrand Road, former formerly as listed and Old LaGrand Road relocation as listed in Richland County.
That's being conveyed to us, because I remember the first first portion of that was being conveyed to DOT, and now this one is coming to us for right away, is that correct?
I believe so, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, um is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, um any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
And Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item fifty-three, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero five nine, authorizing condemnation for easement acquisition for CIP project for the Swigert Creek.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? I know this is uh is our, one of our sanitary sewer projects, so with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item fifty-four, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero six two, authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as a portion of Sycamore Leaf Lane, Magnolia Pedal Drive, and Sapphire.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussions, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Item fifty-five, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero six four, approving the installation of a public art project at Saluda Riverwalk.
So moved, second.
There's a motion and a second, I do want to note for the record that the the committee who has put this whole initiative together with the peace poll has has identified thirty-four peace polls in twelve different locations across our city, so this isn't just a one or two times, they're really gonna have these all over, and I hope people will enjoy them and have the opportunity to to embrace uh the meaning, but also the artistic uh efforts and beauty of these items as they're popping up across our city. With that, uh is there a motion?
Yes.
We got a second?
Yes, sir.
And we're ready to roll.
Before we call the roll.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure there's no questions regarding the location, that's good.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into a period of event resolutions, item fifty-six, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero four three, authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at Frosted Blooms within the thirteen-hundred and fourteen-hundred blocks of Blanding Street on Saturday, October the eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item fifty-seven, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five zero five six, ratifying and authorizing the consumption of beer and wine only at Town Theatre Season Opening Party at ten twelve Sumter Street on Friday, September the twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Just for the record, so folks know, this event already happened. We had approved it internally. It was a mix-up across the board with us, so we're ratifying it just to make sure it stays in the record. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
And Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into a period of appointments, Mr. Mayor, you have the Columbia Tree and Appearance Commission Food Policy Committee and Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Do we have a recommendation for the Columbia Tree and Appearance Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like...
Go ahead, Dr. Bustles.
I'd like to recommend Betsy Williamson for the, one of the four positions for the tree and appearance commission.
Okay. And Ms. Herbert, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to recommend Gray Taylor, District One Representative.
Okay, so we've got two. Is there any other? Mr. Brown, or anyone? Y'all good with these?
We need one more recommendation.
Two appointments.
Two more? I'll recommend Susan Hitchcock from District Four.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a Casey Williams from District Three, please.
All right. You get all those, Madam Clerk?
Hitchcock, was there another one after her?
Casey Williams.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you restate yours.
I'm sorry.
Restate your suggestion.
Susan Hitchcock, District Four.
Yeah, we got her. We got Casey and...
Gray Taylor and Betsy Williamson.
Gray Taylor and Betsy Williamson.
Gray Taylor and Betsy Williamson.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So moved.
So we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
City Council Committee Reports Referrals and New Business.
So we're not taking up the food, food policy?
Oh, I'm sorry. When you looked up at me, I thought you had done all three. Let's do it. I'm sorry.
I was just going to make a suggestion that we have six candidates who have acquired we next six spots. I say we take all six.
So moved.
Can we have some discussion, maybe?
Yeah.
The only issue I see is...
We have the right to bring it forth. You can add to it.
There appears to be, go ahead.
Well, I think Mr. Bailey is pointing to one person is outside of the city limits with two of them, so we were going to recommend the top four because they do qualify for the appointment.
I do think that Ms. Southern, because of her nutritionist and extensive resume in that area, is an important additive to that committee.
You know what?
And I do think that, you know, it benefits our community. I mean, we've done such great work across the line with that. I would be apt to bring both Ms. Southern and Mr. Wells, just because they're taking the time to be part in a very pertinent discussion for us in food policy.
I am, I support your recommendation to add Ms. Southern.
Okay. So with that, there's a motion.
What about the other person?
So there's a motion for Aaron Brown, Alexis Free Jenkins, Julia Turner, Aleah Scott, Ms. Kimyada Southern, to be added to the Food Policy Committee. Is there a second?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
All right.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our Parks and Recs Foundation, we've asked for three appointees, one from District One, District Two, and District Three. We only have two applicants. Mr. Evans from District Three is recommended by the committee, and Brandon Buchanan from District One. Does anybody have a recommendation?
Second.
I made a motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Mr. Evans and Mr. Buchanan. Could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, City Council Committee Reports Referrals and New Business.
I'm trying to find mine.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a referral. I'd like to refer a contractual discussion on the Transit Center to the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee.
Second.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. To the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee. I believe that meets next Tuesday.
Somehow, some way, I lost what I was, I would like to refer to the committee, the public service, in the Public Safety Committee, to look into the, last month, the Legislative Committee provided information on new options for local governments to regulate golf course, golf cart use. We're seeing more and more on our, for commercial use, and I'd like to see what's in that current ordinance and what we can do to change things to make it safe. Last week, I got multiple calls from constituents about the golf carts, especially around events, and they're not following any of the road requirements of safety, staying in traffic. They're riding off in the grass, riding down the wrong side of the road, filled with people. Got a lot of complaints last week about that. We tried to address this before. I think we've got to come up with some type of ordinance that will allow us to look at that and figure out how we regulate that. It is a little tricky, because especially some of these events crosses both state, county, and city roads, but I do think we need to look into it, so I'd like to refer that to the Public Safety Committee.
So moved.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickaman?
Madam Clerk, does that include a vote for both of those referrals? Did we take a referral vote on the economic development?
I thought we did.
We did? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
It's getting late.
Any other referrals or reports?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, not necessarily a new business or referral, but this weekend Biz Arts, which precedes, in conjunction with community development, and I've been kind of promoting it just for the Arts Committee, we have Deion Generet here, who I believe probably signed up to speak, but I want to go ahead and put him on the spot so he can give a pitch about this weekend why people should show up. It is public input, Tom. He signed up.
Good evening, Mayor Rickaman, City Council, City Manager, everyone. As he's already said, my name is Deion Generet. This Sunday, we have collaborated with the City of Columbia Office of Business Opportunity, Ayesha Driggers, and we've come up with this initiative entitled Biz Arts, where it's the fusion of business and arts, coming together to impact in the city. I see that we're growing immensely. We're number two in the Southeast, and this initiative, along with your all's vision for the city, is to help bring small businesses and creatives to be in alignment, to scale, to continue to drive in that number and maybe make us number one. And so this Sunday at the Columbia Museum of Art, we'll start this series entitled Biz Arts, where we'll have small businesses there. We partner with Cola Rap, I mean, Cola Jazz, Mark Rap. We also have Jared Jenkins. We have the county representative. We have Councilman Bailey will be there as well, a legacy business owner.
Put him on the big stage, right?
Say what now?
You're going to put him on the big stage, right?
I would have had you, but you was busy. But yeah, so, and so this initiative...
Well, you tell Ms. Ovita Glover you're not coming to her event.
Oh, no, you can't do that. Please show up there. But yeah, so this is what's happening, and I just want to say thank you to the city for being supportive of this initiative and small businesses and this collaborative effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have a few more individuals signed up to speak, if you all are ready.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Wade Fulmer?
Good afternoon. I wish I could give you a thank you today. It's been two years since I first became, before council, and since I started the emails. Nuisance Animal System Dereliction. Questions, no answers, all that time. If this veteran was not the victim, but instead the previous residence, a single mother and a daughter, were victims of three years of nuisance animal noise, would the city avoidance dereliction do same non-enforcement silence? Or if the victim was an ill or disabled person, or foster child or elder, or someone in at-home hospice, or an abused person or child back home from mental health care or children's facility? Are your family member or a worker or retiree suffering the nuisance noise? Would you, the city, do the same dereliction? Why seventeen months before one only ticket? Why awaiting an eventual in-city court fiasco, no tickets for repeat flagrant violations? Who of the city, after the seventeen months, one ticket, would not allow additional ticketing by animal control? Why the tampering withholding of evidence after months of city time for court preparation? With hell from your city court, not provided by city attorneys? Why did city attorneys not prepare and factually provide reports and details to the court, not ask detailed questions of either the victim or of the owner of the animal? They did not. Why did a separate city attorney quietly accompany a defense surprise witness to the back-corner seats in the dark area of the courtroom, waiting until the last moments of the trial to reveal that surprise witness accompanied by a city attorney? Mr. Mayor, city dirt dereliction has brought more avoidance. No replies to my two years' emails and in-person questions presented at council meetings. Dereliction has brought more questions of the city's stall, distraction, and the attorney's division. Has brought no accountability. Your watch silence has allowed the city's stagnant nuisance animal broken system, dropped the ball like a rock, wasted servant's good duty job done by non-enforcement. They would not have to be coming back if they did something right away. This is not health and order, and there's no excuse.